At the meeting, so I'd like to ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. You lead us please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the representative states, one nation, united in the great.
Roger, please call the roll.
Alda, Griffin, here, Hubbard, here, Michelle's.
Present.
Schlaf, I have some semi faro.
Here.
You.
Here.
Bruterly.
Here.
Keating, you're mallet.
Hey, thank you very much. Item C is approval of the meeting minutes from our city council meeting on December twenty seventh. Is there someone that would like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Um, move to approve the minute.
Sir, moved by Griffin, second by Senator Faro, thank you both. Give me any comments. So, who counts? Other council members? Seeing none, please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Some affair?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We are down to prearranged participation. And we have representatives of the Dexter Women's Field Hockey Team here this evening. And I'd like to read the proclamation, so can I ask you to stand? Come on up a little bit closer. Didn't be a regular thing.
Like that.
Yeah, let's keep it going. So we offer this proclamation. Whereas the Dexter High School Women's Field Hockey Team had a stellar season, boasting an impressive twenty-one and two overall record. And whereas the team showcased their dedication to excellence. Earning back-to-back state championships, clinching their fifth school title in the twenty-twenty-three Division Two Championship game. And whereas the team's extraordinary performance throughout the season underscored their hard work and team spirit. Spearheaded by captains Emily Kate Covert and Marissa Skinner. And whereas the team's unrelenting diligence resulted in well-earned victories over Saint Catherine. East Grand Rapids and Detroit Country Day in the playoffs. Where they notably kept opponents scoreless. And whereas in the state championship game against rival Chelsea. The team emerged triumphant at the decisive three-zero victory. Showcasing their resilience and steadfast focus. And now, therefore being resolved, on behalf of the Dexter City Council. We extend our heartfelt congratulations to the Dexter High School Women's Field Hockey Team. For their outstanding accomplishments. This triumph not only fulfills our community, not only fills our community with immense pride. But also serves as an inspiration for future generations of athletes to aspire to greatness. This proclamation is delivered on the eighth day of January twenty-two-four. Congratulations and well done. Bring this over. Congratulations. Nice job.
I had, I had, I didn't get one of those fun, you want them?
You don't need to bludgeon the photo.
Just on behalf of the team, we just want to thank you for the recognition. It means a lot to the girls to have the community and find them, so thank you very much.
Thanks for representing us. And as always, you're welcome to stay from the meeting. Or leave to continue your studies. Sounds good.
Thank you so much, yeah.
You're welcome. Okay, we are on to item E, which is non-arranged participation. Anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak? Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you for allowing me this time this evening.
Sure.
In my review of your minutes from the last two meetings.
Name an address, please, for the record.
Gerard Spencer, one fifty generous. Thank you. Our review of the minutes from your last two meetings do not seem to explicitly reflect the actions of the DDA with respect to the two recommendations. You made regarding thirty forty-five and the Sloan properties. At the DDA meeting, they agreed to pursue public input with respect to additional development. And to hire an independent facilitator. This should be a part of your reference. I've also had the opportunity to look at the documents printed, presented with respect to the proposed fire station. A few observations. The first is the fact that your initial estimate exceeds your financing by a significant amount and seems to be growing. On page sixty-one of the presentation. There is a line item for site work, including seven thousand cubic yards of fill. Put down a model perspective, it represents six hundred dump trucks. Which is placed end to end, would go two miles. Or two-thirds of the way between the current fire station and Z Road. That item has a total cost of nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If you assume half is the cost of the dirt. Each Dexter resident is paying a hundred dollars for dirt. I would encourage you to go to your architect and pursue a more reasonable solution. Finally, in your conversation last time, you spoke about the use of a contingency, contingency. To fund the shortfall. Understand, there is nothing contingent about this. A contingency assumes an unknown. You know exactly what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening and for coming to the meeting.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Haley, twenty-two fifteen Melbourne Ave. And I like to welcome everybody to the new year. And over the holidays, you know, everybody gathers, family gatherings and stuff. Mentioned to a family member, they all came to the meeting and saw them, they looked at me and said. Why, you don't own any property? You know, then I recall last time I hear a council member spoke up and said, they really don't feel like the public should always be involved. I'd like to remind them in the council that the government is for, of, and by the people. We all are here for, of, and by the people. I'm gonna keep it short, because I know everybody wants to get out and watch the U of M game, and hopefully they win, right? So I'm gonna focus on one thing, is the common project. There's numerous reasons why that should not go there. First of all, you want to put a roundabout there at a choke point, throttle back. How is that going to even work? No, some engineer told you? It doesn't, and if you do that, you put the other one on the other side, you realize you have three roundabouts coming in this town? Only one not going out, then she's gonna say, hey, you might as well throw one there and be surrounded by roundabouts coming in and out. And, you know, it's not a good idea. I wouldn't, uh. Other part of it is. Developers, you know, if you look at all the projects they throw at you. They tell you it's all sunshine and roses. I can personally attest to one of them, and it didn't work out like that. So I don't know if you guys are just all naive to believe everything these. With all these degrees, come at you and go, oh, they must know what they're doing, they got all these degrees and believe everything they say. I don't. I had a handful of classes left. Before I broke them back in an automobile accident to finish a degree in professional chemistry. Studying computational chemistry. Publishing a referee journal on molecular overall analysis of an eight or three B dynamo platinum complex. So I have the right to look at other people's degrees and question them. Is that what science is? Science said once one person said, if you question me, you're questioning science, that's not what science is. So you should question these people and not believe everything they say. And the building is going to be taken up by a lot of concrete. An inch rainfall on a good day, on a good inch rainfall, how much water do you think is going to fall off that concrete into that creek? I did math this well, you know, between point and a half gallon to point six two gallons per square foot. And you're gonna have, well, over one acre of concrete. Math comes out twelve. Eight, five thousand tanker trucks. Falling into that creek every seven minutes, lot of water that could fall into that creek. Are they going to stop such and be back? Without devastating the creek. Another thing is, you want to put an underground garage. There. That's a horrible thing, and, you know, I like, you know, people like all these EVs and stuff, did you read about recent EV fire in Washington? I know the person who actually knows the person who plugged in one car and went out and plugged in the other and went and baked dinner and. Just so you know, something about those EVs are made with, what, lithium? Nickel, cobalt, magnesiums? All toxic metals when they're pressing big batteries like that, and when they catch fire. It can get up to five thousand degrees Fahrenheit. The melting point of average concrete is twenty-five hundred to three thousand degrees Fahrenheit. Structural degradation of concrete occurs at nine hundred and thirty-two degrees Fahrenheit. So let's throw a bunch of things that can potentially get up to five thousand degrees Fahrenheit. Not only that, when you throw water on those batteries, what do you think happens? That's why I brought the chemistry, and that's live metals, lithium. Take pure lithium, drop it on, feed your water, before you do that, drop in some phenolphthalein, it's an acid, you know, base detector, turns pink. That thing which is flop, 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 it's a highly exothermic reaction. In the end, it raises water's temperature. It also turns water pink, because now the lithium is soluble in that water. And they're spraying water on it, where do you think all that? soluble lithium's going to flow and the other things going to flow. Right into the creek, an environmental disaster for everything. Not only that, when you put water on lithium. The reaction goes, base lithium hydroxide and hydrogen gas. So you want to put our firefighters at risk going into an underground tunnel. With a something that produces hydrogen gas plus heat, you know, you've heard these things can explode, there's a reason why. And/or spontaneous catch fire. And. Get the contractor, Sanji, if you want to. Honor, pay tribute to the man who built the vibe up there in both of them, okay? Does not build a stone and concrete building, distracts from it. Oh, well, he built the building, don't tell him, have you ever told him? First thing comes, tell him windows, tell him builders. Roll down a bit, roll down a bit, oh, there he is. You know, make it with that arch. And that's just sad, if you want to. You make it turn into a park. Drop a caboose there, put a nice placard, clean up the whole area, call the National Historical Park Site. And, you know, federalize it, make it a national site, because, you know, there are people around the world who like to come look at those things. That's pretty cool, that is still working to this day. All right, that's how you pay tribute, you don't let somebody come build a building, throw their name on. The last thing. Is the most. I didn't bring all the things, I was kind of cumbersome. You know. It said that it was unanimously approved by everyone in the planning commission. Because it says, Bloom pointed out that developers included. One thousand one hundred foot city water line extending from Alpine Street beyond the dome. To the entrance of West Ridge Subdivision. OHM and our consultants estimated the cost of that to be five hundred to six thousand, five to six hundred thousand dollars. This is a massive infrastructure investment that we are doing to the city. We'll just call the developer entity at this point. When one entity illegally offers money for something else of value. To sway or influence some decision or process. Do you have any idea what that definition is for? Bribery, bribes from these developers. You take that water line out of this project, what do they get? Absolutely nothing. Okay, nobody would have voted for that building if that water line wasn't in there, it's a bribe, you started it. And the sad thing is, there's a bunch of young people on that committee. Who voted for it? Where was there any adult to stand up and go, hey, look? You know who, let me ask you this. After they installed that water line. Who pays for the maintenance? Who pays for the repair? Who pays for the eventual replacement? It's not these developers, not the entity, is it? It's the taxpayers of Dexter on the bill. Is that the right thing to do? Let me explain what Sile Township does, maybe that's why everybody feels it's okay. So, you know, wires? Well, the building was too tall, so Sile Township fired it up, ladder truck. All the road structure, down Jackson there and Z didn't fit. So they had to make put money into that. They had improved water maintenance infrastructure. So who's on the bill now, as long as it's been there, for the repair, maintenance and fixing of all that? The taxpayers. By a company who put into it was nothing. And the latest for Sile Township, have you seen those massive buildings in Jackson Baker? The developer had to give them a aerial ladder truck to get the project approved, or those buildings are too tall for this infrastructure of Sile Township. Those are bribes.
Jeremy, one minute, please.
Am I looking at this all wrong, that, am I? Somebody tell me, is, did you ask the taxpayers that, you know, tell the taxpayers that they're going to be on the bill for the maintenance, repair and. And replacement of this line? I know it's something that Dexter needs. But is it going about the right way to get it done? No, it isn't. Okay? I mean, that reads like a bribe, it's right there. When one entity offers something, money or something of value to persuade or influence someone's decision. That water line has done it to everybody. Remember, the government is for, of, by the people. This water line wasn't, you know, it'd be different if the city said, hey, we're going to put in this water line and. Let the residents know that it's their, going to be the responsibility. This is just getting slipped in there, and a big building's going to pop up, you know, it happens after this water line. More stuff's going to pop up on Dexter Chelsea Road, because other developments, only there's water line out there now, we can hop into that and.
Jeremy, I've allowed you ten minutes. When you had five, so appreciate your comments.
I just think about it, please, and consider it highly. Just people shouldn't know that what's happening. Right here in black and white, thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for expressing your opinion. Others in the audience, anyone else would like to speak this evening? Okay, Josh, I need you to help me online, is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? If so, please use the raise hand feature. On the bottom of the Zoom. Not seeing any hands go up to you. Okay, that concludes our non-arranged participation. We're down to item F, are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I'll move to item G, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Will we approve the agenda as in the packet?
Moved by Senator Faro, second by Hubbard, thank you both. Any discussion?
I have one question, I think for Justin, so I saw over the weekend that. Ann Arbor, the city of Ann Arbor made a similar change to their meeting to accommodate the football game that's happening later tonight. But it seemed like their process was calling a special meeting on Saturday and. The agenda item at that Saturday meeting was the rescheduling of the regular meeting. And I'm just wondering, I know we've called a special meeting as. We are permitted to by our charter, is there something formal that needs to happen to actually cancel the seven o'clock regular meeting?
I don't believe so. Not that I'm aware of.
Thanks.
Thank you. Please call the vote to approve the meeting, agenda?
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you, we have an agenda. We have no public hearings this evening. We had the one communication in the packet, which is our upcoming meeting list on page nine of the packet. Are there any comments on the meeting calendar? Zach?
The Western Washington Regional Advisory Group, which is the new version of CAPDAR. Is meeting this Thursday at Chelsea City Council Chambers with representatives of the county. We're going to share various activities they're doing and look for some feedback.
Thank you, has, does that have other meeting dates, times?
Changed? This one was, was pushed to accommodate folks who are, who had kids in school. And county folks. It's still usually at the. Wave office, but because of anticipated larger turnout, we got a larger space.
Where is it again?
Chelsea City Council Chambers.
Great, okay. Okay, I will move on to our first report this evening from our Public Services Superintendent, good evening, Tim.
I'm on the radio right now.
Very well, and you?
Good. So, two weeks reports in front of you guys, I can take some questions, it was a short week as far as. Any questions?
Questions for Tim? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
That's really good work.
Thanks, real quick, got the new backup turned, came in last week. And we're getting ready for so, obviously it's coming this week, so. Not happy, but it's about time.
It's January.
We're good.
We're ready for it?
Absolutely. So everybody's close, close that, six people.
Zach?
Yeah, sorry, it took a little while to scroll the page, I note that in sewer, there were seven alarms or faults in this, this report, is that a normal number, is that high?
No, it's high, what's happening, and we're in the midst of trying to get a different frequency. Frequency we have right now is a weaker frequency. We noticed this last year, when we started getting an increase. We tried a couple of different things, because getting frequencies not exactly the easiest thing in the world. So, that's all in place, we already put it submitted to the FCC through the permit and everything. It's just when they get to. So, all right, we're pushing it, I got on UAS, I called them last week about it. And of course, I get the same. Just like the state, you can only go as fast as they go. We needed, because it's getting to be a pain.
Will our equipment work with new frequencies? Okay, thank you.
That's all, thanks, Tim. No blue. Next up is our Community Development Manager, welcome, Michelle.
Good evening, council, how is everyone this evening?
Good, you?
Just fine, thank you. Okay, before I go with updates, do you have any questions for me? Okay.
Oh, wait, we do have a hand.
So under your general updates here, under A to. Considering a text amendment, the planning commission would be considering a text amendment that would allow you, the zoning administrator, to initiate an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So I just want to make sure I understand what would the process be then, if that were approved?
It's just adding the zoning administrator, it's not taking away any authority that the planning. Commission and city council already have, it's just allowing, it's adding zoning administrator. Because we see day-to-day things that come up, excuse me, and the ability to. Go forward and schedule the public hearing instead of bringing the issue to planning. Then having them decide to whether or not to schedule. It just adds extra time, this is a way to expedite.
So there's still a public hearing?
Oh, yeah, all of that is still the same.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Planning Commission's going to be busy with public hearings for different text amendments. The, you may be wondering why you haven't seen anything regarding an amendment to the PUD review and approval process. I want to make sure that we get the language correct in the amendment. Because I want to make sure whether we're tying the actual zoning change. To the signature of the development agreement, which traditionally has sealed everything, or if it's one of the final site plan is approved. So I haven't been able to connect with Scott Manziel due to the holidays, so once I'm able to get that done. I'm confident that this will go on planning's agenda for February to schedule that. And you'll see copies of that. Amendment, or proposed amendment. Unfortunately, the firm were closed on Friday, December thirtieth. I think it was a surprise to everyone, I have not spoken with the owner yet, I do have calls into him and hopefully he'll be able to get back with me. My understanding, and this just isn't from a hearsay. It's also supported by phone calls that I've gotten from architects. It sounds like the business has been sold and somebody else is going to come in with a new. Concept, but it sounds like it's also going to be still some type of food establishment. Hopefully we'll get more information soon. At your last meeting, I explained Mishda's. Housing readiness incentive grab, incentive grant. And told you that I anticipated having a proposal from Carlisle Wartman. That would help us outline what we would do if we got the grant and how we would propose to amend the master plan. Excuse me, I wish that I had been able to get this in your packet quicker than just the supplement. But to give you an idea real quick, Carlisle Wartman is proposing. Kickoff meeting, plan to plan with council planning commission, the downtown development authority, the ZBA, any other city groups. And that would help set expectations, limitations in the geograph, geographies of the project. But the core component, and this is the one that I think is the most important, is that public engagement. It ties in with the things that you as council have talked about over the last couple of months, getting that public input. And engaging the public on thirty forty-five broad. Excuse me, the Sloan Kingsley property. This proposal would also help us look at not just those areas, but really get public input. On other areas within the natural DDA of the entire town. As it pertains to going forward and being able to plan and implement for additional housing within the city. The proposal is a not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. You don't have to necessarily approve it, subject to getting the grant, unless that's something you want. We're, and then we're going to go forward and make an application for the grant. Unless I fear otherwise from you this evening. If you've got any questions for me, please let me know. But that's the, that's the biggest update.
Questions for Michelle? Zach?
So master plans, we're supposed to look at them every five years.
Yep, we're going to look at this one in the next fiscal year.
Yep, and. Part of the process is you can look at it and say, this is good. You can say, oh, my gosh, everything's changed, we need a completely new one, or you can split the difference and say there are some things that have changed. Has the planning commission looked at it in taking a position on which of those three flavors?
Because we weren't scheduled to start that in the next fiscal year, we haven't, however. They were aware of what we were doing, because I didn't give them that update at their last meeting. And one of the things that they have talked about, as you have, and it is also in this proposal. Is looking at the lessons we've learned through the PUD process, especially on the different multiple family projects that have come through. And they are on board with you in looking at that, what we have to. Update in the master plan, that then we get implemented in the zoning ordinance to address those concerns and those lessons.
Once, and I apologize, I've only seen this since I sat down here. The community engagement element references stakeholders could participate. One of the things I've heard in news where I've done this and from talking with very employers is. Very specific needs for housing, so our economic development plan from a couple of years back says we want to get tech companies here. When I went on the, the Spark and met with founders, I said, what would it take for you to come to Dexter? When I went on the, the Spark and, and met with founders, I said, what would it take for you to come to Dexter? They said, housing that our workers can get for forty thousand dollars. I would like to see that element where the process talks to our current employers and employers that we've benchmarked that we want to get here more. Uh, one other element, and I know this is a, a bit of a hot potato. Is, we need to be able to talk with our surrounding communities in a more organized manner as opposed to an ad hoc manner on housing. So by way of example, Baker Road in Syle Township, their master plan calls for up to eight units per acre. If there's water in sewer. We won't be able to provide affordable or attainable or workforce housing in Dexter if we don't work with our surrounding communities. That's something that, that ought to be documented here. One other thing that I think would be important for housing element. Not necessarily master plan, although I could see it be incorporated in here. We have, for example, made it much easier for folks to do accessory dwellings. Our zoning ordinance before we amended it allowed it, but when you read it, we didn't really allow it. I don't believe we've had too many folks with accessory dwellings.
I think we have almost a half dozen.
Six in four years?
Four years, but it also came through the COVID.
Yeah. So, a lot of communities struggle with the accessory dwellings, not because of the, the zoning entitlements, but because of the other things about. Financing and hooking up the sewer and those types of things. So it would be good to. Include that as part of this master plan of how, what are other things we can do to make it happen more when it makes sense?
Okay. I think everything you outlined has, it definitely has merit and can be done. I think those are all things that we would tackle under the plan to plan to set those. Those, um, uh. Uh, specific, there's specifics, uh, challenge, uh, limitations in geographies within. Within this.
I'm good.
Un, unless. Let me step back. Unless it's something you in council would want specifically, if we get the grant and this comes back. We would tweak it before you would adopt it to address those things. It can be handled either way, whatever council prefers.
So Planning Commission is going to talk about this in February?
They've already talked about it. They haven't seen the proposal, but they do know that we're.
No, Zach's question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Zach's question of which? Do we need a whole redo, tweaking of it? Leave it the same?
Uh, if we, if we can do that, if, if you would like. Um, I was going to wait until we had the grant before we fully go into that, um. Like I said, they've already had some conversation.
Well, the grant assumes we're going to do a lot, right?
Right.
I mean, the minimum, but I'm just curious. He's got a good question.
Right. We can ask them those questions.
Like that, I think that's worth well.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you. Happy New Year. Does anybody have anything to add under boards, commissions? On the way down to the city manager report?
Um, so, I also don't, don't have a whole lot for you, but I, I think Josh has a, uh, update about bicentennial that he'd like to share.
So we met with, uh, Mike from Wade Shows again last week and we went over and we revisited, uh, Broad Street over by thirty forty-five, McRata Gale. Never kind of looking at that site. Um, I think it's, it's feasible to do it over there based on Mike's kind of calculation of it. It would just be utilizing some of the, um, well, all the private parking lots over on that side of town would be necessary to do it. And then be able to go over and maybe talk, talking to the Legion or Knights of Columbus and having, uh, potentially having the, uh. Over that location being there. So that's kind of. How the route forward would most likely be to make it feasible for that site.
We, although we, we did get an email from Mike today that, um, it, it could be split up as well. So we, we could use, you know, main to the fifth on Central and then kind of have. So, someone like the, the kids stop over in Monument Park and along Central Street. And then some of the other major rides over on Broad Street.
Okay, so you're going to learn about the housing and then, and then bring that back?
Uh, so, so, so.
Is that what you have to confirm? It sounds like?
Well, so I, I guess what question is, I mean, it, it is. Is there interest in, in, in that?
Which, all of it abroad or splitting it up?
I, I, or I, I, either or.
I would say there's interest in both. But I mean, I'd like to understand the full options and then figure out the housing and then. Bring it back.
The DDA was receptive to it, we know there. The question that we'll have is, if that ground lot next to the resident. Is that what would have been the resources? Because if you have, if it's going to be the kind of wind sitting in the ride, we have the same issue now.
I think, I think we need you guys to figure out the best use of it.
The layout.
The layouts and bring it back and then we can choose one. Jimmy?
Yeah, just regarding the use of the property for it or any property, I guess, city on DDA owned for that purpose. Are there special? Land use approvals required or anything like that?
Um, public property is more of a public access sort of, um, and it's going to be. It's going to be departments from.
Or a form of it.
The key things.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the bigger question is just, is there interest in doing a car?
I think, I think is, in these other areas, yes.
Okay. Who, I, I, I just want to make sure we're not spinning our wheels and. Keep, keep, keeping the, the carnival folks on, kind of on, uh, on the line if, if there, if there, if there isn't interest, so.
Understood.
Yeah, I mean, the only other place that came to my mind was one of the school parking lots. But I thi, it seems like one of the added values of keeping it closer to the town, to downtown is just the. The street trucker, you know, walking pedestrian traffic, um. But I guess if I were to think of where to have a carnival, I would say the high school. Probably for this residential.
And, and in talking with, um, Mike, he, he did say that, like, for example, for the generators, um, they are, um. Apparently, the, 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 they're not as noisy as like we would expect them to be.
They're like insulated inside of a semi.
Thanks for your work on it, Josh. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Any other questions for Justin? Zach?
Uh, maybe for Finance Director, but with the, the item we had last week about allowing folks to donate money back. Is my understanding that whereas we have ACH, for us, the other folks get the old school paper checks? Is the reason why we're not using ACH for them as well?
Um, no, just a lot of changes, you know, that happened in the past. Some have to go around and share their.
Okay, that, it's. There has been a spate of. Checks from public entities disappearing and getting messed with, so.
Yeah, we have it.
Alright. But there's, there's no cost to us to do ACH, that's the cost of collecting the information. Equivalent to the printing of the check.
It's last.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Anything else, Justin? Okay, um, my only, um, comment on my report is I've heard from, I think. One council member related to the goal setting sessions. So if everybody could let me know what dates either work or don't work. A quick email, text, anything, I would appreciate it. So I can get those dates set with Justin. And I don't have anything else other than, uh, good luck to all those Wolverine fans out there. Are there any council member reports?
There's a lot of report, but can I just say before I forget?
Great, okay, thank you. Thanks, Lon. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. We have one item.
Hey, I moved, we approved the one item on the consent agenda. Bill's a payroll of the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Motion by Hubbard? Second. Second by Senator Farrell. Thank you. Please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Senator Farrell?
Yes.
Griffin? Yes. Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we're down to new business, item M one. Uh, there are two items, new business, both submitted by Councilmember Michelle's. Uh, M one is consideration of requesting legal opinion on fire station funding.
I'll move the motion on page thirty.
Moved by Michelle's?
Second.
Second by Senator Farrell. I just have one question. Justin, how much would you estimate we would spend on each of these opinions?
I, I, I don't think either of them would be very intensive for, for Scott, so I, I guess probably five-ish hours. Um, which would be about a thousand dollars for each.
Okay.
And the first one is already worked on a little bit.
Alright, so you'll communicate that to him, that's intent to stay in that range? Okay. What?
Um, I just one thing, I mean, I'm going to vote for both of these just because it seems like. I don't, it seems like the right thing to do in terms of. This body and us working together, but I really wish that, you know, if we're sitting here talking about budget. It does irk me a little bit that we're spending money that I'm not a hundred percent sure we need to spend.
Okay. Other comments on the motion? Okay, please call the vote to approve the request for legal opinion on fire station funding.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Senator Farrell?
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes. Motion carries. Move to the side of M two, is the consideration of request for legal opinion on police station funding.
I'll make the motion on page thirty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Michelle's, is there a second?
Second. I'm sorry.
I, I, I'll take.
A second.
I'll take Griffin. Thank you. Discussion on. Second one. Seeing none, please call the vote to approve that request for legal opinion, uh, consistent with the motion in the packet.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Senator Farrell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes, motion carries. We're back around to non-arranged participation. Would anyone like to speak from the audience? Is there anyone online that would like to speak? Please use the raise hand feature if you wish to. Yeah, I've seen none. Uh, council comments, we'll start with our student representatives. Hold on, if you're ready. Okay, fair enough. Happy New Year. Bonnie?
I guess, uh, we're going to school. Started all the traffic. And, uh, my fingers crossed for a snow.
I love it. You're putting this balloon up and, or they do the. Excuse, yeah, okay. Uh, Senator? Wow.
Uh, just one quick thing. I think it's, uh, exciting to acknowledge that we have two freshmen from. U of M freshman on the football team tonight, Paul Cabana and Micah Davis, and I hope they're having the time of their life and go blue.
Well said. Zach?
Uh, just a fun anecdote for today. I was on the field in the Rose Bowl on ninety-eight. And. The entire field is like a putting green. It is the finest, most manicured piece of grass you can imagine in the world. That's all. Nice brass, I can get it.
Thank you. Amy?
I don't have anything tonight, thanks.
Okay. Um, thank you, everyone, for being available for a special meeting. Um, are there any proposed agenda items for future meetings that?
Oh, I have one.
Yes, well.
Um, we all received that email about revisiting, um, naming something in honor of Paul Cousins. I think we need to put that on for a future agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. I will seek a motion for adjournment at six forty-five. Someone? Okay, move myself, Earl.
Just off my.
Second by Hubbard, all in favor, six forty-five by saying aye.
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 Have a great evening, everybody. Go blue.
Thank you.